This session of the Lincoln County Commission on November the 3rd, 2011 at 6:00 PM is now called to where Members' Presidents Charles F. Dan President and Thomas Ramey Junior Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to bring them into the regular session, the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on October the 20th, 2011 at 10:00 AM.
Second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda is discussion of concern about the Lovejoy Cemetery at the Upper Mud River Reservoir.
We have been contacted by one of the parties of the Lovejoy Cemetery, and there's a road that goes from Mud River Road to the cemetery that crosses some of the property that the dam's on, and he wrote it out, and we've known about this for, it brought to attention the County Commission probably three years ago, and we've tried to get, talk with the state about if they can repair it, and they take a position no, and we were approached probably three months ago about an alternative on the other end from the cemetery road, there's property that the County Commission owns that could get them close to where the cemetery is, but there's one landowner in between, and I just felt like it, I met with and talked with, and had Judy to talk with, one of them, and we're sort of at an impasse, and I really feel like if we can get something, sit down and talk about, we might be able to help everybody out, because I think we need to try to help get access to the cemetery, and at the same time, the other landowner is sort of locked in between the cemetery and the property that the County Commission owns from the condemnation when they put the dam in, so it just felt like it needed to be updated, and certainly we'll continue to work on it.
Next thing on the agenda is the Lincoln County Opportunity Company. We received a letter here from Alice Tomlin, who is Executive Director, and it says, "Thanks to the support of your office and the partnership between Southern Community Action Council Incorporated and the Lincoln County Opportunity Incorporated, we have been able to continue and maintain the meals program at the McCorkle Center. The meals program has done well, still well in fact that we are running low on funds. We can provide meals through the rest of this year, but only if we decrease the amount of meals we are serving. We would like to avoid this if possible. Therefore, we are requesting $5,500 to help support this program for the remainder of 2011 as well as through 2012. Any assistance in this matter would be greatly appreciated. Please feel free to contact me to discuss this matter sincerely, Alice J. Tomlin."
I did speak with Alice, and she assured me that she'd look for other funds, none available she could find at this time, so I would entertain a motion to provide the money as she has requested.
Yet I had also spoken with Bill Harpner, who is Assistant Director, he also gave his commitment to seeking other funding, and at this time I'll offer the motion.
I'll second, in all yes vote, motion carries.
Next on the agenda is Oh Business, Alan Holger, who we had discussed last week about the emergency telephone plan, and we contacted Alan, and he gave us a brief statement to read and to record last meeting, so Alan has come forward tonight to discuss the plan and let everybody know what's going on.
Welcome, Alan, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Everybody in the podium now tonight. There was some question, and you asked me to respond to it, we have spent a lot of time over the years looking at the liability phone system within rural county, and we found that we were subject to a lot of problems in the past that we didn't find in other counties, and when we originally installed the 911 center in the county, we handled all of the calls, and the calls came into the county and out of the county on one set of cables running between here and Barbersville, and we knew it was an inherent problem, and after a lot of work, we were able to get those rerouted last year, and a certain amount of our 911 trunks come in through Sweetland, a different route, so that if part of the system's down, it kind of is a fail-safe situation. But we also ran into some, ran into an issue yesterday where an equipment problem in one of the telephone companies, and at this point, I can't tell you which one it was, because they're both pointing fingers at the other one, but one of the phone companies, something happened, and we lost every 911 trunk coming into the county about 11:30 yesterday. However, our backup or our contingency plan is those calls were automatically routed to the Boone County 911 center, those calls were answered, and then transferred back to us on one of our business lines. We've got that in place, and we've used it numerous times over the years, where we have a reciprocal agreement with Boone County to take their calls and vice versa, and I guess when you first contacted me, I thought maybe that was the issue of concern, but I guess it went a little bit further. We have looked at each individual telephone exchange in the county, and each one of them presents an interesting issue. For instance, the 855 exchange is half our county's and half Logan's, in fact, more of 855 belongs to Logan than it does Lincoln. So if that system goes down, and they can't call outside their dialing area, then there's a location in Logan County where those calls default. If Griffithsville has a similar problems, those calls default to a number in the local area. In most cases, it's a fire department, or an ambulance service, or somewhere, and then we send someone to that location to man the facility until such a time that services are restored. We had numerous issues with the 778 exchange over the last several years, and if my memory serves me right, it was approximately three years ago, I filed a formal complaint with the Public Service Commission against Frontier Communications, making the argument that the people of that area were paying the same for phone service as the people in Hamlin or Allen Creek, but they were getting a different level of service. And one of the things that we found at the time was that if there was a cable cut in that area of the county, they had to bring a Spicer in from Bluefield. We also discovered that some of the things that you would think could have been handled here locally, people had to come from a long ways away to deal with it. At that time, we asked for several things, and Frontier, there were things that I've been asking for, for four or five years, and once we filed that PSC complaint, Frontier was much more willing to deal with us, and they agreed to train some of their local technicians in the restoration of fiber, which was an issue, they agreed to purchase some equipment that was necessary for them to do it, and the other thing was, they put in a special phone line between the 778 or the Ranger Telephone Exchange and Hamlin. And what happens on a normal day-to-day basis, when you're in 778, and you dial Hamlin, your call goes into Wayne, goes into Huntington, and then back into Hamlin. Well, it was that fiber that kept getting cut, so with this special line that we installed into the 911 center, if that line physically does get cut, then the call is default to a special 778 number that we have on our dispatch console. We don't use it to make calls out, nobody has the number except the phone company, and it's just kind of set up as a default. Well, they actually provided it to us free of charge, because they realized it was an issue, and I think they thought that would help it, and it has. But the problem we've run into with the copper theft, and I think that was also discussed, myself and Commissioner Ramey and Commissioner McCann have discussed this over the last couple of weeks, and looked at different scenarios and different issues that were affecting the community. I can't think of anything right now, other than giving blood, or taking scrap copper or scrap metal to a scrapyard that I can get cash for on immediately that's legal. And what I mean by that is, that if you go out today and you work, your check's a week away. If you go out and give blood, they give you a little bit of money for plasma, not blood, they give you a little bit of money. If you take scrap copper or scrap metal to the scrapyard, they give you money immediately. And it's excessively enticing to people who are hard up and need money and don't care about the consequences. And unfortunately, West Virginia's law is weak. Several states around us have invoked policy that there is a three-day waiting period from the time you take that scrap metal in before you get paid. And I think most of our phone outage problems in this county have been because of theft. And unfortunately, they're stealing fiber optics cable that has zero value at the scrapyard, but they're cutting it down because they don't know what it is. I've had thousands of dollars stolen from our county tower sites in copper, gas line and copper grounding for the sites. You know, we've got a couple of sites here in the county that, when they're finished and built out, they'll have probably $300,000 worth of equipment that'll be used by everybody from the state police, the FBI, to the local sheriff, and they go in and they steal copper, and then leave us at risk that the first lightning storm that comes through, we lose a significant amount of copper. So the danger's there, but we've taken measures on our end, that we've actually placed alarm systems at our power sites that monitor the copper, somebody steals our copper, we get an alarm, and we at least know about it. We know that we've got an issue. So we've tried to address that. With the 778 exchange, that seems to be where we've had more problems than everywhere in the county. We've had problems everywhere. I got a quote from a company that could allow us to install a satellite dish on their CO, and if they lost connectivity to the outside of the world, then it would carry emergency calls via satellite back into the system. But when we got the quote, it was extremely expensive, it was a little under $12,000. We have looked at some other options with some satellite dishes on trailers, where we can pre-wire some of these facilities, and pull a trailer in, and put the satellite dish up, and kind of like we did with the generator, move it around from area to area in the county when it was necessary. At this point, it's still something very, very new, that we don't have an answer to. Right now, if 100 people lose their phone service in the county, we don't necessarily know about it, and the telephone company is not required to tell us or notify us until they have 200 customers affected. So there are outages that occur all the time, and I'd say there's probably a few dozen people at any time point in the county that have lost their service, either because of trees falling, or an auto accident that has occurred, or an engineering problem, something. So they notify us at 200, and once that's done, they notify the 911 center, and they notify the director, and I generally will also get a text message or an email. And at that time, we'd look at possible ways to restore service at a location, because the way the telephone system is designed, even though you have a branch on the exchange, that's not a true exchange. That exchange works off of Wayne or East Lynn, and sometimes restoring service isn't as easy, depending on where the cable cut is at. But we discussed this as a fix-all, that as it stands right now, if the area of service is widespread, then the local volunteer fire department is toned or dispatched or alerted to report to their station, and they keep the station staffed and manned until it can be restored. There are some occasions, if the outage is long-term, then we will send a county employee over there with a radio. All of the fire stations have radios, so that was an easy place, to place the radios to call us and let us know that there's a problem. However, in some areas of the county, if you have an emergency, it's a long drive to the fire station. So we have purchased, through grant money if I'm correct, radios for our crime watch, and there are crime watch units in pretty much all areas of the county. And what we plan to do in the very near future is call a meeting together of the crime watch units, and each of those crime watch units are individual entities, and there's a lot of movement, there's people that join crime watch, and sometimes they move around, and we're going to start asking them to prepare for us a list of who has those radios, who has those emergency radios out there in their vehicle, and who has those portable radios that were blocked. And then they're going to have to give us permission to be on the list. Obviously, you know, you may be a private type person, you may live in an area where you don't want somebody to know, and that's something that we will have to address, but what we want to do is get that information back from all those crime watch agents, and then create a list in the community of 15, or 20, or 30 people that you know they've got a radio, and this is their address, and this is where they live, this is where they will go in the event of an emergency, that they can sit there and radio a call back to the dispatch center for help. And I can't say it enough that we constantly look at redundancy, and we look at the way the system is designed, and I'm kind of a technical guru anyway, as far as, Judy called me a nerd yesterday, I don't know whether to take that as a compliment or not, but I try to understand the system and the way it works, and we've tried to ask the phone company to provide for us redundancy in cases where it didn't exist. And I remember 20 years ago, when the 911 center went online, I asked Armstrong, I said, "Do all the cables come into the county through one route?" And they said, "Yes, they come up Route 10 out of Huntington and Barbersville." I said, "Okay, and what happens if they get cut? What happens?" They said, "It's never happened. It's protected, it's fiber, part of its fiber, it's never happened." And would you believe, two days before the 911 center went online, it happened? So we immediately installed some phones into the center that come back up through Griffithsville, so that we wouldn't be caught in that situation. And we've looked at that situation there at the 778 exchange for a long time, but our State 911 Council is meeting tomorrow, and the copper theft issue unfortunately is no different when you steal copper from a public utility or from a public safety tower site than if I go over to Duck's, or Mike's, or somebody's house, and I steal copper out of their backyard. It's larceny, and depending on how much it is or what the value is, there's no stiffer penalty for stealing it when it affects utility. And there will be legislation, we've been promised for this upcoming year, to penalize the people that are doing this worse, and to make it a stiffer penalty, and maybe even go to the waiting period. You know, I hate to see the waiting period invoked, because if you went out, you've got the copper legitimately, and you've saved, and you stripped, and you need that money, and you take it to the scrapyard, and it's two days to get me your money, well, that penalizes the honest person, but at the same time, we've got to do something to discourage it. So they're going, their legislation will be sponsored this year, pushed by both the Emergency Managers Council and the 911 Directors Association to try to make it a more stiff penalty. But we are looking at ways to try to protect that network every day, and there are things that are in place, you know, if the system is lost in Logan County, it rings to Boone, and if that's lost, it rings to Lincoln. So we created some of those cooperative agreements, and we were some of the first in the state to do it, because we saw the faults in the system. But one thing that you might consider, or that you might think of, is that in many communities, the telephone is on this side of the road, or is provided by this provider, and this telephone, or the other side of the road, may have cable television, or it may have something else on it. So in one community where the telephone service is out, if someone else has a voice-over-IP phone system, Vonage or one of the others, where it plugs into your internet service, it won't be affected. Or if they buy a magic jack, you know, that plugs into their computer, it's a safe, simple backup method if you have cable television coming into your house, and you have your internet from there, it's a backup, it's something that you can use. So it's something to keep in mind, but does that address basically the concerns that you all have at this point?
I assume there's any questions, I know.
Yes, the only thing I'm not hearing that's over, now the fire department is saying is where they will be somebody on standby, you know, like a ranger if the phones are down, and we know they're going to be down for four or five hours or something. The fire department then is where the people would need to go.
Yes.
Okay, the only thing that I want to say here is, the people don't know them, okay? And if we can come up with some type of way to get this out to all the people, that hey, the fire department's where you need to take your loved one, you know, if you've got an emergency, and I think that's one of the biggest obstacles to get that word to all the people.
Well, I think you've got a valid point, and one of the things that we use is the emergency alert system. Remember the old EBS, it used to be EBS, and now it's the emergency alert system?
Right.
There's three people in the county that have the ability to utilize that, and we do have the ability to activate that system when there's been a widespread communications outage to let the community know that 911 is down, report to your local fire station, or report to one of the pre-designated communities to do that. And we have done that on occasion when the outage has been very, very large, but because we are in an area where we have a county newspaper that prints a newspaper once a week, we don't have a television station, we don't have any radio stations, sometimes that information getting into the community is very difficult. It doesn't get the word out to the right people as quickly as we'd like. We are in a process of going through a national certification program, it'll be one of only five counties in the state that will have storm-ready certification. In order to have that storm-ready certification, we have a lot of hoops, and a lot of plans, and a lot of things we had to go through. One of those things was that we purchased weather radios that were activated based upon the county that you live in. It used to be that activated weather radio, and it would notify the whole region, so nobody paid attention to the weather radio, it got turned off, reset, or unplugged. We bought those, and they were placed in locations of high occupancy. The school board has one, both town halls have them, and when we put them out and then started testing the system, we found out that the weather radio system provided by the National Weather Service was extremely lacking in Lincoln County as far as being able to activate those radios. You can bring that radio and bring it inside this building and set it up, unless you have an outside antenna, it's not going to work. So we have the National Weather Service, one of their radio engineers coming into the county, and we have requested that they locate a NOAA weather radio site in the county, so that those radios that you go out and buy for 12 or 18 dollars a radio shy can be put in every church between here and Harts. They can be put in every business between here and Harts, so when there's an issue in that local community, we can get the word out and get the message out. Through a federal program, those weather radios were provided to every school in the country, and I can tell you, some of the schools that I go in, in this county and other counties, those weather radios are sitting right there on the secretary's desk, and they listen to them. And there's other schools, they probably can't find where they're at, but I can assure you that if those radios are in our schools in this county, there are places that they're not going to work because of the structure and because of the location. So we have requested probably five months ago for the Weather Service to start us on this storm-ready process, and to upgrade that National Weather Service power site, so we'll get the word out. So what we could do is, once we get crime watch in here, and ask them for quarterly updates of everybody that has a radio, if that radio was bought through the county, I think that's the least they can do. Give us who's got the radio, give us their address, give us their phone number, and give us the permission to list it in a brochure. And we can list it in a brochure, and we can list it in a bulletin, and we can put that information out into the communities. And if you have an emergency, the first place you want to go to is the local fire department, because it's going to be staffed. And after that, here are other people in the community that may or may not be home due to the time of the day, but they have been assigned radios that can contact us in the event of an emergency.
And how would you suggest this is out? Would you say a brochure?
Yeah, we'll publish a brochure, that's the only way that I would know, and I don't know if that is something that we could publish and put in tax tickets, I don't know if it's something that we could put in other, some other kind of mailing that the county does, that's something that...
The commission might know something, I don't...
We've put information like that before in our tax data.
I think, I think one good idea would be if they have the crime watch signs on the vehicles now, if they could put something on there that says 911 contact, or something like that, because they're out and about, the people would know that's designated.
Well, or maybe even put a small sign in their yard that signifies that residence has got a radio assigned to them, and you see that sign, you'll know that hey, that's what this symbol means.
I think if, once you get the crime watch people together, and tell them what your problem is, I think they'll come up with some suggestions.
You know, your fire departments, most of them have those signs that they have at their departments, like in West Ham, they got that big billboard, you know, you have an emergency, go to the fire department, or something like that.
And the thing is, all the volunteer firemen, I won't say all of them, but I'll say the majority of the volunteer firemen in this county have radios assigned to them, or they know how to get a radio. And that's something that, everybody knows somebody that volunteers for the fire department in your community, and that's something that we, we have so much movement in that, I think it would be difficult to try to list that and give a list out to the community of who to contact, but maybe we can include in the brochure, please keep in mind, most volunteer firefighters in your community do have radio communications, if you have an emergency and you can't reach someone at one of these locations, this might be an alternate.
And another suggestion is, just about everyone has to go to the grocery store, and all the grocery stores have agreed that they will put brochures into the grocery boxes, so that's another one we could give information out to them.
Well, we can do the brochures, and that won't be an issue. But it's just going to require us to get the crime watch people back together to tell us who's got the radios, and make sure that they understand, that we're not trying to play big brother with them, but we need, we need good updated lists of this information so that we can get it out into the community and let people know. But I think it's a very, very valid point, especially when you, you know, even look at, we don't have the payphones even in the county that we did 15 years ago. Most of them are gone. You know, we had the one in the courthouse here, and it costs us three times more a month to put it, to keep it working, then it did what it was getting in change, just nobody uses it like they used to.
And I think, you know, when we get the cell phone service eventually, and I know that's another issue, that'll alleviate a lot of this, you know, when that's up and running, but, you know, right now, a lot of people just know that load your loved one up and head to the hospital, you know, they're not aware of the fire department.
And that's a good point, and what you think, you know, well, you know, the phone service gets out, well, my cellphone's going to work. Well, a lot of people don't realize these, these cellphone towers sometimes are connected back to their switching center via fiber or some other type of method, that if the local telephones go down, their power sites go down too. At one time, we had two tower sites on the hill here, it was an AT&amp;T tower, and I forget what it was before, it was Verizon, Altel, Independent Cellular, or somebody, one of those two towers was connected back to the mobile switching center via fiber, the other one was by microwave. So if Armstrong lost service, everybody's cellphone service in town that had that one particular provider also lost service. So sometimes that happens, but since you mentioned that with the cell service, nothing would make me any happier than to have cell phone service from here to Harts when I drive down Route 10. We have sent petition after petition to AT&amp;T, we've begged, we've pleaded, we've done everything we can to get AT&amp;T to put something on the site that we have at Harts, and they came down and video... down and videotaped, came down and did a lot of construction, did a lot of construction drawings and some studies and looked at it. And took them three or four months, come back and told us nothing. And what we see them doing now is putting more money into upgrading the existing sites that they have to 3G and 4G service and greater capacity and greater bandwidth. And they're building out the systems that they have now. I mean, I couldn't show you the work that they've done here in Hamline in the last year. The new antennas, the new cable. Well, it's on an existing site. All it's gonna do is provide better service for the people that already have service. And just a few months ago, AT&amp;T called me, left a message and I thought, you know, hey, it's finally time, we're gonna do something. They said, we wanna talk to you about towers. I said, great, when can we meet? They said, well, we just wanna make sure it's available. I said, well, Harts? And they said, no, we wanna put something on your 911 tower in Hamline. I said, why? They said, because people that make the call in Hamline drop it before they get out to Route 34 and pick up the other tower out on March Lovejoy site. And then you do when you go through the curve there. So they were looking to put another one over here somewhere in town. And I'm not sure whose property, but I understand they'd already signed the lease agreement for it. They didn't pick my site, they picked somebody else's. But that's kind of the position they're going. They're building out the current network. And a lot of people thought if we put a site in Harts that that would cover a long range. But I would venture to say that it would take 10 tower sites between West Hamline and Harts to effectively do that area because of the height of the mountains, the depth of the valley. If you were in Kansas where everything was flat, it would be much more simple. But it's not. And I'm not sure that we will see cell service throughout Lincoln County and all over Lincoln County in my lifetime. And we went up to the dam. We went up there, we looked at a piece of property, the county commission was willing to give it to us. Me and Mr. McCann, we trucked all over the hill, we, up there above where the horse farm was and showed them where it was, gave them the longitude and latitude. They brought it up, said, well, you can't do it. They said, it's not financially feasible. And I said, why? And they said, there's not enough houses in this area to support the infrastructure to build a cell site here. So they were looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollar investment for something where people don't live. And the argument that I always make to them is that even though there may not be very many people that live in Harts compared to, say, Chattenfield or lower, there's an awful lot of people that travel Route 10. And for that purpose, we need cellphone service just because of the amount of people on the road. And so far, it's not working. Commissioner Ramey was telling me that he has, working on putting in a microcell. I don't know if anybody knows, everybody knows what a microcell is, but you go to AT&amp;T, what are they, about $200 now?
$125.
$125. They've come down. My brother has one. But you hook it in your house and you hook your internet service to it. So anybody that has a cellphone that you've given authorization to use can use a cellphone in your house. And it goes into that little box that you have and then it goes out on the internet. So your cellphone will work, but it travels out through the internet service.
Through the phone line.
Through your internet.
If you have DSL through the phone line.
Yes.
So if the phone line's down, where do you go?
But, but if you have, if you have DSL, the phone line's gonna be down. But in a large portion of the county, people have
Cable.
Cable and they have phone service there. So if you've got cable, that's an option.
We'd have two of Armstrong, they'd let him put it in.
Okay, it sounds to me like we're fortunate to have volunteer crime watch people and volunteer fire department people. Otherwise, our communication wouldn't work.
Well, and we've got to have operators and people that jump in there and really do, do help us and stuff like that. So...
Well, it's just good to know, you know, we, that we have Alan who is definitely works to bring these things about and very knowledgeable. Don't wanna brag on him too much, give me one of the pay raises or something. But it is good to know, it is for me to sit here and know, he comes in and he knows what's going on. He's been working at it and seeking results and getting results. So it is good to know that. But I hope that helped answer the questions.
And I try to hold the telephone company's feet to the fire. I love the guys at Armstrong. There's some great people that work there. But I called one up today and I said, okay, you know what happened yesterday? I want answers. I wanna know why it happened, what piece of equipment failed, what we can do to keep it from happening again. And Verizon's been asked the same thing, or Frontier. I wanna know where the fault lied, you know, what happened and why the redundant cable that was brought into the county didn't actually work. And our calls were answered in Gooden County. We took all the calls, everybody was dispatched, everything was handled. But every time we had a failure, we sat down and tried to find out why something didn't work. And if there wasn't a spare part, then they better get one. If it was a technician that didn't have the proper training, we've asked for that. So most of the time, they're really easy to work with. And they get very easy to work with when you talk about going to the PSD. And I've done it over the years, probably three or four times. So...
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So if the power, the electricity's off, well, we'll say the phone lines are down, somebody's having a heart attack, you can't call 911. When you go to the fire department, the city's there, volunteer fire departments, nobody's there all the time, is there an emergency phone right there or?
No, if, if the phones go down and it's a large outage, now obviously for...
Well, it might not be. We're willing if we get small outage.
If it's a small outage, then there should be somebody up the road with a phone that works. And the phone company doesn't notify us if it's under 200 customers. Does that make, you know, we don't...
Yeah, I mean, I know that. But my question is, is if you do have an emergency and, you know, where we live, sometimes I won't have cell service, I only have phone service, but somebody across 14 mile mountain hill or somebody at Feralsburg may have service, but the people at the town parks where the fire department's located, they don't have phone service either. My question is, if I go to the fire department and there's nobody there, is there, is there a name posted, a number posted, is there, you know, to get to or just stop forgetting, just go to the hospital?
If we're notified, if we're notified of the incident, we're aware of it, then we will set off their pagers.
Okay.
And activate the same thing that we would as if you called and told us your house was on fire. And we will advise them to man the station until further notice because of a phone outage.
Okay.
And, and we had a large cable outage in Allen Creek in April. And the volunteer fire department was there. And within a matter of two hours, you know, we talked, I talked to Canole Cam, they exchanged, split half of it's theirs, half of it's ours. I said, well, the fire station was caused ringing, two is in Lincoln County, I'll send somebody over. So I sent somebody over with one of our radios and he was there at the fire station till midnight. I try to man that location with a trained county employee because I know they are only volunteers. And generally, we will use them until we can get somebody else out there that can be there around the clock and at least get paid for being there and doesn't have to miss work the next day of calls. If that makes any sense.
Yes.
But yes, we, we do have them man the station. And at the same time, if we lose our county communication system or we have a huge radio outage, then that's the first thing that they're instructed to do is man the station until further notice. And then we will notify them by phone or notify them by some other method other than our radio system that they, that they don't call.
So are you gonna take the initiative to, or ask somebody else to get the crime watch people organized and have some discussion about the radio procedure?
I do not have a collaborative list of all of the crime watch people, but I know Rick does and I know the sheriff has had more coordination with that. So...
We have people here at night dropping...
So I'm going to gather that information. We'll set a meeting here in the next, next few weeks, try to avoid hunting season too much, but at the same time, get everybody in here, explain what we're doing. And we don't need everybody from all the crime watches, but we need a representative from each of those areas. Because it's gonna take them some time to get back out there and collect that information and collect that data. But...
Not in Lincoln? He told me he got...
Well, let me give you my email address and can you send it to me tonight?
I'll live tonight.
Okay, that's great.
On the radio and the people has...
Now, the other thing that I'd like, the phone numbers are great. We have a system that we subscribe to called WARM. And if then that we need to notify you of a incident, and this is if your phone is working, we can pick a zip code, we can pick a certain amount of addresses, or we can pick the whole county if we want. And we can call a number, leave a recorded message and have that message and have the system call you and give you that message. And it makes something like 250 phone calls every 30 seconds. So it makes the calls from a computer center that's located where there's backups and redundancy and whatever. So we've got those in place. And every month, as people get new phones and they take phones out, that database is updated. So if we have to make an emergency notification and it's in the middle of the night and, you know, we have maybe a child that's walked away from their parents and we've got a search going on in the community, or we have an Amber Alert for somebody, or we have an Alzheimer's patient, we may call you and tell you about it and ask you to look. We've used the system maybe 10 times in the last few years and it's usually a very limited area that we'll call. The health department, it's our system that the health department helps fund through some of their disaster preparedness money, that they help fund it. And they use it sometimes for their community volunteers. If they've got a meeting or something, we'll set up the message and they'll call and notify the volunteers of that. So if I get all the telephone numbers of all the crime watch people, we can use that system to also notify that group of a problem also.
Put us down there, please.
And, and one of the things, I know you said it'd be long, but my call tonight, you were right.
I've got a clock running here, it's sort of past due.
Lincoln PSD has recently purchased radios that are on the new state digital radio system that is being built out. And Mike was in an area of the county a few weeks back. There was no phone service. He saw a motorcycle accident practically happen in front of you. The guy was critically injured, Mike got on the radio, he called for help. Who knows how long it would have taken before we were able to get help if he hadn't had that radio in his vehicle. That system is becoming more and more across the county. We installed the same radios in all the Tri-River Transit buses in the last few weeks. So all of their buses now have the digital radios where they can talk to the 911 center, no matter where they go in the area. We are in the process of updating all the radios in all the public schools in the county to do the exact same thing. So everybody is really, really moving forward. And sometimes it's happening so fast, we're having a hard time getting everybody taken care of as fast as it is. But the state is building a, it's a tremendous system that has, we can take a vehicle and go to the right channel in the right location and I can talk back to the office from Martinsburg or talk back to the office from Whittle. And those are capabilities that if someone from our state or our town comes in here, they can talk to our center also. So after 9/11, there was a lot of money pushed out by the federal government for interoperable communications. And honestly, I think the system we've got here in West Virginia is probably one that is a model for the rest of the country. So, and we've got a site that's under construction at Harts, which will be one of those state systems. And it's America. Both of those should be on the air by the first of February. And then the site at Salt Rock in the quarter is not, will also be on the air. So those digital radios that he has will be wonderful for all of us. So...
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is written down?
Welcome, Rick. I don't think you can get the record.
I missed that.
I said, I don't believe you'll be able to break the record because I usually...
I, I feel good. I feel good about that.
Shalit still has the record.
How you been?
I'm fine, thank you. Let me give you a quick update. I did wanna invite both commissioners to the drug summit, which is tomorrow, 9:30 to 1:00 at the community center, community library. Just to give you a quick update on the wastewater project, I met on the 25th with Gleisman Excavating, you know, the people who have the current bid. Because we've got about $33,000 left in funds that we could use for another system. So we've identified four locations. They've given the, an estimate for each one of those four locations. The low end is $26,000, the high end is $29,000. So we've got enough money to do one system. There's a chance that the DEP will have some unexpended funds from other projects. So we may be able to get some of that money. But I haven't heard for sure from the DEP about that. Remember, probably a month and a half ago, I talked about a system on Stinson Brands that had gone belly up, that had some of those old concrete tanks in it that were manufactured in Barger'sville. And the firm that manufacture, manufactures those tanks is the same firm that installed that system. So we get a little double jeopardy with them. We're gonna meet Monday afternoon with the district sanitarian and the head of that firm to, at that site, to look at that site. Part of that is because Gordon Amona Anua is sort of leaning on this guy, saying that it's important for him to help us out. So we'll see what happens. My thought is if nothing comes out of that, I may come to the commission and ask that you write a letter to Gordon Amona Anua, just sort of saying we're concerned about this. That might work. On the 8th, next Tuesday, I'm meeting with Jimmy Kasdor, who's one of our county sanitarians. The county sanitarian has to say that current system is a failing system before we go to the DEP and get permission to get money to put that in. So he's gonna look at those four systems that Gleisman has looked at. And then Ryan Harbison, who's the district sanitarian, is gonna start working with me on the 10th to go around and look at homes for phase four where we might do in-ground rather than direct discharge. You've got a copy of the notes from the wastewater summit that we had on the 13th of October. That's where we brought DEP and DHHR together to talk about the project and how it might apply to the rest of the state. And then what we do for phase four. Some of the things that I felt were important that came out of it, one was that they agreed that we should try to put some more experimental in-ground systems in if we can. But that was real positive. They wanna sign off on those systems before we put them into the bidding process. The other thing was that they were willing to at least lay on the table the idea that there might be some funding to put into research for cheaper in-ground systems that we might try to put in someplace.
Big issue.
It's a big issue. I'm not sure where the funding would actually come from or whether they'd be willing to let us be the organization that deals with it and sends it out to different universities or not. But it's on the table and we're thinking about it. The last thing you've got is the most recent, it's on the legal sheet, post-installation sampling. This is the sampling of the tributaries. If you look at the far left-hand side, that's the most recent one that was done 10/24. Again, this is just a little snap in time, a snapshot in time. So it doesn't necessarily tell you everything that you'd like to know, but I think it's interesting that the top locations, the top of the grid locations, which are all the more remote areas in the watershed, have lower E coli numbers than of course the ones toward the bottom, which are in the more populated areas. You would expect that probably to happen. We're still, we're still in some high readings on the fart camp, number 53. That was where for a while we were getting some really good readings. I think there's still a home that we haven't identified that's got a problem. We continue to do individual sampling through those homes. The other thing is the dog bone that was starting to go down has started going back up again. I'm not sure what that's about. There are several homes on dog bone that don't have systems, although the majority of them now do have systems. Hopefully, by the end of next round, almost all those homes will be taken care of. So my hope is that we're gonna see some positive kind of numbers there.
Do we have a field test where it says, you know, in six months you should see a change or anything like that?
Not really.
But it would take a while. If it was a bad, bad system, it'd take a while for it to work its way out.
It might, it might. You know, if you get a good flood.
True. True.
It takes care of everything, the tracks, the wastewater.
These samples, are they taken in the creek or are they taken right to the grid?
These are the samples that are taken in the creek. So the valuable thing about this is, this is what, the DEP gets samples that are taken out of the systems, which show for the most part that the systems are working, but this is showing that the systems are clean in the watershed, so. In a way, I feel that this is even more valuable, if we can show long-term that the numbers keep going down.
And that's what we really hope and want, the cleaner water.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, really doesn't matter. You made that other guy look pretty bad.
Your county, no more greets.
County put on you tonight.
Next thing on the agenda is the Hartz Community Center, and just some brief information to let the public know that the government office will be closed on Wednesday, November the twenty-third, and December, Wednesday, December the twenty-first, due to the holidays. And the government office is working? Thomas, do you have anything? The Corcoran Community Center, do you have anything?
No, we haven't had a meeting since, you know, of course, November, but we're due to have one tomorrow, first body of the month, so they'll have some room for that.
Sharon, everything was going fine? What we like to hear?
Probably beat about twenty now.
Fourteen. I thought that meeting tomorrow night was canceled, except he was gonna be meeting over the phone, yes it is. Having a public meeting over the phone?
Well, the meeting, from what I understand, the, uh, the building has been rented tomorrow night, and I don't know who rented it, but the building is being used, been rented tomorrow night, so we were gonna discuss our business over the phone. Now, from what I understand, Scott said that Sharon needed to talk to him about anything, he could call her later and she could say, know what was going on.
Okay. New business, I need a motion to prove the bills that's submitted for payment.
So moved.
Second, been all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the exoneration orders that's submitted by Tracy Dinsdale Sasser.
So moved.
Oh, second, been all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the temporary employment of a falling as contract service workers for the election department to assist in the process of redistricting as requested by Donald C. Wittenfleur, Nicholas McCombs, Zachary Roberts, Amanda Shelton, Michelle Clay, Randy Logan, Francis Vance, Joseph Scrags, Janelle Cecil, Sarah Smith, Tammy Roberts, Maria Atkins, Mary Atkins, Austin Bayes, Douglas Smith, Mariah Muddings, Gary Ellis, Donna Bryant.
So moved.
Second, been all yes vote, motion carries.
What would their, what would their role be?
They were going to be going, some have already been working stuffing the envelopes, tagging labels, and some of them will be going door-to-door.
I need a motion to prove the employment of Terry Halsted as deputy clerk in the office of the circuit clerk on a ninety deprivation period at a rate of pay of twelve hundred monthly effective November the first, two thousand and eleven, as requested by Charles Murphy, clerk.
So moved.
Second, been all yes vote, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the appointment of Gary Lindwood as a humane officer, service processor, and litter control officer in the office of the sheriff at a rate of pay of ten dollars per hour effective November the first, two thousand and eleven, as requested by Jerry Bowman, sheriff.
So moved.
Second, been all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Krista Murphy as administrator to the estate of Winland-Wilkerson due to the death of the, of the executors, bond set at one thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second, been all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation to the Hamlin Youth Basketball League in the amount of one thousand dollars and request that a financial report be filed upon completion of the season.
So moved.
Second, been all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the donation to the Duval Youth Basketball League in the amount of one thousand dollars and request that a financial report be filed upon completion of the season.
So moved.
Second, been all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to prove the contract bond between Lincoln County Assessor, Lincoln County Commission, and the Global Science and Technology and Corporate for the Computer Service for Assessment of Property with the Lincoln County.
So moved.
Second, been all yes, motion carries.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, I can say it. Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the prescriptions I've taken back.
And how was it?
Um, we had a better turnout than last time, so I'm pleased for that, and I'm grateful to all the officers involved, of course, the county council, the commission, all of you sponsored this for the county, and very grateful to Lawrence and Sharon, words for volunteering, and Cheryl, Brad McAllister. We sent letters to all the churches and all the schools had flyers. Of course, I'd like to see a better response another time, it's, it's a work in progress.
Well, the, whatever we accomplish is good.
That's right.
Needs to be done.
Was more people that brought there?
More people, yes.
A larger amount, larger town?
No, we're still, we're still working on exactly how much people captured, but more people showed up, which is great.
Friday, before the, I had a guy that came in, didn't see him, he had a bag full, and he gave them, it just happened to be large, was there, I laughed a lot.
Yeah. Careful.
Any update on Ten Mile Water project? They, they asked me to ask when I come over here, so.
Not that I know of, I don't know whether ninety days is up or not, but everything's just waiting on the contractor to start, I mean, it's been awarded and all that, so I don't know. They did have ninety days to review, make sure everything was in order, so, before they start construction. It should be getting close to that.
Lisa?
Yes, I've got a couple things. At the last meeting, Mr. Presley mentioned that code about the committee people, did you all have time, did he call you back with the code?
Yes, yes.
And what, what was the resolution to that?
Well, it needs to be equalized, it does say you can add more people and those kind of things, and I guess, I decided that maybe that didn't need to be part of this, or didn't bring it back this time, but at some point, it will need to be done. But as long as, as I understand it, there'd be, committee people won't be elected until the next election, so it doesn't have to be done now, I didn't even realize that at the time, I hadn't thought about it really, I'm just trying to get it done. But I think at some point in time, we will be revisiting that, but I decided, well, let's just put it on the back burner till we...
But currently, did, I mean, did, under the code, did, I mean, when he called, told you, did it state twelve committee people to continue with the twelve?
Well, it says you can go up to twenty, I believe.
Twelve to twenty, okay, that's what I was wondering.
And that's something, you know, I, I wanted to think through it, I've talked to a few people about that, is, is it, I mean, you want to expand, no?
Well, that's what I interpreted as too, but I just wanted to see.
That's the way I, I was, I haven't relooked any more than that one time.
Okay. The other concern I have is with the curb at the New Hartz High School, I know somebody, somebody came up there and dug out some dirt, the main part of the dirt in the curb still sticks out, and is, is going to be a hazardous area, and the part that they have dozed has already started slipping. So I'm not sure if you're all aware of that.
Thomas, I've seen the paper, did it.
But is there a problem with the property line and that curb or something, why they didn't take part of that dirt out, Thomas, I don't know.
We, we were not privy to that process, but living in that area and, and the accidents that occurred, not only on the bank side, the people pulling into the bank, but also the school, I was somewhat confused by the quotes from the State Road in the Lincoln Journal, because, to me, what they did helped with the size, the view in that particular area, but, but when you stand at the bank and you look in the direction of the school, the most dangerous part of the curb still remains, and I can see no reason why they should not have proceeded to remove that. Is there a problem with who owns that property, is that a property line? I don't know, but I think it should be investigated.
Well, I think somebody needs to check in for it, because...
Well, the school board really probably needs to look at it.
Well, I mean, I don't know.
Well, neither, but I'd say it's a safety issue, it's everybody's concern, but it's a school board issue.
And when, as I stopped and talked to educators and others in the Hartz area, and even people from other parts of the county that come through that area, they talk about how it is a disaster waiting to happen, and I would love to see the State Road come back to that area and review and try to take care of the problem, it is a problem.
You, you and I both know how many accidents have occurred there in history of that curb, so.
And that doesn't, those accidents do not include traffic from school buses and people dropping off their children.
Not yet, right, so. And then I guess my other question is, at the last meeting, when the county clerk lady spoke about going door-to-door to do registration, I requested that, that we would use a Republican and a Democrat to do that, you know, for transparency reasons, and I was just wondering how many Republicans will actually be used for that door-to-door campaign?
I don't know, I just proved the list that was submitted, but certainly, I don't think you could really inquire people's, if you employ them, probably ask them, are you a registered voter and how are you registered? I wouldn't want to do that, but I don't know. I didn't, the list was submitted, I assumed it was in order, I don't know.
Well, we, as, as the Republican Party, no one was notified, no one was sent any information, no input was sought out from us, so.
Well, and I understand, I understand.
We're just trying to make sure things are that transparent in Lincoln County.
Right, I understand. And I don't know that anybody contacted the Democrat Party, I, I would assume not, I mean, that's not how the employment would go on, but we, you know, basically, Mr. Witten's office to provide people to do this, it was the commission's idea to change the precincts and to follow through with the responsibility of redistricting. But in order to communicate this, I think we, just like we did, I believe in the redistricting, we tried to more than do what was required, and I think that's the case in this notification process of precinct changes. It does say we're responsible and are required to notify, but what we have done is to make it as open and as much notification as we think can be done within a set, set amount of time and money. And of course, we've done that by sending letters out to all the people yesterday, I think, that went in the mail. And, and put a ad in the paper, and then, of course, we got the people going to go into the various areas where the big changes are and go door-to-door, trying to locate people and talk to them about it, so it's, it's, I think it's, it's important, of course, I still believe that by going out there, that you maybe will get more people to get involved with the voting and those kind of things, just talking to them about it, but it's one of those things that I, in Lincoln County, we heard about the emergency thing, it's hard to communicate sometimes, but this is the approach we've taken, Mr. Rainey.
I did hear that there was concern that, from Republicans, that Republicans were not used at the level that many had hoped within the Republican Party, and that the Republican Executive Committee was not sought out in terms of asking for help from the county clerk's office. So I asked Christie Scrags from the clerk's office, did you reach out to the Democrat Executive Committee or the Democrat chairman, and she said, absolutely not. I chose who I thought and the county clerk's office thought would be the best workers, and we are staying away from politics, and we have directed those who are working that they cannot go to anyone's homes unless two are together, not one person can go alone, and that they are not to talk about partisan politics, individual elected officials, candidates in the past, they're to stick to the redistricting information and tell the voters exactly what this new plan means for them in terms of their precincts and their magisterial districts.
And we did have them in the season to train and talk about those same issues. I just sat in on it, I didn't do any training, but...
Well, I just feel since it's like a similar process to the irregular election process, and county commission sends us information, you know, poll workers, that we would have at least been contacted for some input whatsoever, you know, so.
Understand, understand.
Since we want to keep things on the up and up.
Anyone else in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Just have a couple of different issues I've worked on since the last commission meeting. Approximately a week ago, I was leaving the courthouse, I'd been here working in Villa Stimsy, the, one of the employees in the circuit clerk's office upstairs, as I was leaving, stopped me on the back porch and was telling me of a problem they have upstairs with carpet. The carpet in their office is very old and had been ripped some time ago, and to cover the ripped carpet up, they had to put duct tape over the carpet, and as they would walk back and forth, they were having problems, sometimes tripping on the tape, so I worked with her and the other staff, and Commissioner President, and Judy Johnson, and going upstairs and evaluating the problem, it is a safety hazard, so we have contacted and, and the process of contracting with someone to go upstairs and replace that entire carpet in that area that leads into the record room. So I'm glad we were able to take care of that before.
It has been measured and it has been ordered.
I attended earlier in the week the Lincoln County Fire Association meeting, and at that meeting, Kevin Craig, Jim Morgan, and Carol Miller were also present from the House of Delegates. And the meeting was to inform the delegates and others about, really, the struggles that volunteer firemen and women face. For example, they have to receive over ninety training hours to even be able to ride a truck, and once people join and if they can't hit the ninety hours due to a physical disability, even though they have interest in helping with the fire department, they are unable to play any role, they can't ride the truck, they can't flag traffic. So they were trying to talk to the delegates about, there's many people that are retired that might, they could possibly have some physical disabilities and be unable to complete what would be considered firefighter one, but those people are valuable and could take a burden off of the volunteer firemen that can go into the houses and that can do the more strenuous work. Also, in the meeting, the other areas of Lincoln County that, that's represented by, I don't even know the new delegate district name, number now, but Josh Dowers and Red Lutcher.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. The delegate district twenty-two, which encompasses the rest of Lincoln County, those delegates have had a commitment to the fire departments in those areas, it's a longstanding commitment, that they direct community participation money back to those individual fire departments. And the Hamlin Fire Department, which is not in twenty-two, which is represented by the delegates I mentioned, they want to build the same kind of relationship with those delegates, and we were able, after the meeting, to sit down, the three delegates and members of the Hamlin Fire Department explained the needs of the Hamlin Fire Department and possibly even West Hamlin, since the new delegate district does take in more of the West Hamlin area, so that we could try to get community participation money for these particular fire departments that have not been included in past grants. I attended a mapping and a nine-one-one meeting with Alan Holder, Judy Johnson, and Christie Scrags, really just trying to prepare for this redistricting process, and, and in terms of equipping those who are going to go out door-to-door, so that they have the names and addresses and phone numbers and descriptions of the individual houses, so that they can better communicate what's going on with the people in those areas, but at that meeting, there's a couple of different things that we talked about, and in no way am I an expert, but Alan explained to me several different options that exist in terms of mapping. And one such venture, if we decided to take, would be, there's a flyover every two or three years, Alan?
It's up to, it's up to you how often you want it, it's general, it's either two.
You would contract with the company that would fly over Lincoln County, or whatever county you're in, and they would do maps of, and they would be able to send that to you on a hard drive, you could pull up pictures of houses, you could see how big the square feet, feet is of that house or the buildings or, and a lot of counties now, especially in Ohio, they've bought into that process, because what they can do, when you have an old map, then you overlay that with a new map, it will pinpoint new buildings... new buildings, additions, and it helps the assessor's office with being able to know exactly if someone has built on and they haven't went through the proper channels so that that property and that building can be assessed. So I think that's something that we really should look at and see the cost analysis to see if it would be a venture that would be beneficial. And I know the assessor's office is always trying to find ways to more effectively go out and assess property in new buildings, but I just, I really like that idea. The last thing I did sit through, did not participate though, but I sat through the redistricting meeting prior to this meeting. And it's, it has been a long process, and Jo Von was professional and effective, and I just really appreciate what she was able to do for this commission in this county. But I just want to reiterate that it makes me feel good sitting here to know that we, as a commission, went above and beyond what other counties do in terms of the redistricting process. Most other counties, actually, I think she said every other county she's worked with, always pinpointed one plan and put one plan on public review. And we put five. The other counties always have a thirty day window of public notice. We did a sixty day notice. Other counties almost always do just a legal ad saying the changes are being made. We did full page maps and descriptive reasoning. And most counties have one public hearing. We had two. Most counties do not employ the number of people that we are in the process of employing to do the outreach. And the people that I listened to that were here at the meeting today, they are informed, concerned about what people don't know, and they want to go out and make sure the public is as informed as possible. So I just, anyone that's been involved in that process, I just appreciate everything they've done and everything that they're going to do. That's all I have.
At the invitation of the new principal at Lincoln High, I didn't get to attend a RESA meeting. RESA is the Regional Education Association of six counties in this area. And I think there's a lot of things that was said and a lot of discussion, but also invited was one of the board members served on the RESA, and Mr. Curry was invited and after the meeting, after the head of the meeting, he and I was basically discussing, I said, well, I've been out of the school system ten years, but I can't tell that they've slowed down any really of trying to take over local control. It just seems like it, listen to the different things that's going on, whether it be transportation, whatever, it just seems like it, that the state Department of Education is still wanting to erode even down to who can train a bus driver to drive a bus. It's hard enough to get bus drivers now with one superintendent, so without having to send them somewhere out of the county to be trained. But it seems like it, and they may have good reason, but it seems to that. But what really was so good about the RESA thing is I got to see our new principal at the high school operate. And not that the people who have preceded him at Lincoln High, but I'm just impressed that he is a person who cares about our kids. So I got a couple of granddaughters over there, Carrie. And he basically can communicate with those kids. I ask my kids, my granddaughters, you know, about what's going on, and they tell me all these things, and they're excited. And then you sit there in that meeting and he's working with these other superintendents across the region here and had things so organized, had the band playing, he had ROTC out helping kid, the drive, people come in like myself, showing you where to park. He just had kids involved, had them utilized, and he just impressed me. I just left there thinking, I am so happy that Ryan Sacks is our principal and he will stay there and get things done. But he, it just, it just seemed like it was, he was in charge, he knew what he was doing. And so it just, it was just good to do that. Today, I did provide, again, Channel thirteen called, wanted to know if we would, I guess maybe they've seen the Lincoln Journal, they wanted to talk about the redistricting and the precincts that we changed, things like that. And I told them I'd be glad to meet with them, and I did this morning around eleven. And so did Judy, had some comments, I think, and Christie. But about this process, a lot we talked about here this evening, what went on, where you go from here and those kind of things. And so I thought that that was, it was good that they came and wanted to get that story out there. It is, I think it helps. The only other thing I have is announcement, we have been invited to commission, as I'm sure other people, that on November the tenth, that the ROTC at Lincoln High has invited the commissioners to attend a program they have from one-thirty to three-fifteen. What I was involved there, I'm not sure, but focus on our veterans, sponsored by ROTC, Mr. Plumlin, so, but that's all I have.
Let me have one more thing. I hate to go back, but I have to say that I'm thoroughly impressed with everything Christie Scrags has been able to do over the last couple of weeks in terms of getting this redistricting process ready. And we had to, as they did back months ago, send letters out to all the registered voters, which took all summer. So when she was asked about sending the letters out, she indicated to me that we would not be able probably to get those out sometime mid-November, late-November. And she, along with the others, have been able to get everything prepared in one week to send out to the voters. So I just think that she is such a valuable asset to the courthouse and.
Takes your job seriously.
Yes.
Is every voter getting a letter?
Yes, every voter, except there's our, there are canceled voters, they will not get some, and some that we do not have addresses for. Some of the addresses say Z needs street note. We can't send that out, and we went down to the postal service, we asked them if they could help us with the addresses. They said there's no way that they can help us with that many. And there may be one that says seven, Semerica. You know, insufficient addresses we cannot send out.
But those who are listed as inactive, there's thousands of inactive, they are receiving a letter.
They did receive a letter.
They will, do they?
That's what Jerry Payton just came in and told me, that all letters were stuffed and everyone has posted each, and they would be put in the mail first thing in the morning. So you should be receiving your letter if you are a registered voter. But the other people that won't be affected by the door to door campaign thing will be Harps, Ranger, and some of West Hamlin. That's what Christie said.
No, no, that's not. You have the Allen Creek area, thirty and thirty-one precinct who combined into one, they will not be receiving door to door. You have McHorkel people, thirty-two and thirty-three, that were combined, they will not receive door to door. You have precinct seventeen and eighteen, they're combining, still going in the same place, they will not receive door to door.
Or seventeen and eighteen.
As that by river. You have precinct ten, who is Woodville, none of that was being affected, so they will not receive door to door. You have, I said, you said Harps and Ranger.
Part of West Hamlin, the ones that didn't change with the district line.
Right. I wish you'd see the district line, thank you, legislature. They're taking in a lot more of West Hamlin than we thought. The Hamlin area, they will not receive.
Hamlin does not.
Door to door, no. And I think that's about it. I think everybody else will get door to door.
You said there'd be two going door to door?
Yes, ma'am, at all times, there will always be two.
Will that be one Republican and one Democrat?
No, ma'am, there won't be one Republican, one Democrat.
Why not?
Mr. McCann stated that with Mr. Whitten and Christie Scrags' call.
Put two Democrats in there, they'll have people change their, that's not what we're going door to door.
We'd better don't talk any politics, only one talking. Get the job done and inform them. Absolutely. I don't care if it was Democrat, Republican, all one of the other, that's not their job, no, we're paying for it. And they've been informed not to even talk about it.
And Christie, Christie made sure during the redistricting meeting prior to this meeting to let them know that they were not.
And Lisa said there, and she was in the meeting, and she heard every word was said. And I take it very offensive because I'm one of those Democrats who will be going door to door, and I will not be changing anybody's politics. Unless they want to be changed.
I have a question. So if you're going door to door, aren't your name written on the list?
Because I'm a.
To be approved as a candidate.
I'm an employee of the county commission.
So that's part of your job as Secretary of the County Commission to go door to door?
I'm not Secretary of the County Commission, I'm county administrator to go door to door.
County administrator, so you.
Anything that you can ask me to do that's part of my job.
You can go door to door, but you won't be getting paid extra money to do that, correct?
No, maybe.
If she turns in a tax.
Oh, so you're doing your job.
This will be outside.
And then she's doing a contract job.
No, not contract.
Well, that's what it says, the temporary employment.
That's why my name's not on there.
Contract service workers.
That's why my name's not on there.
So how will you be getting paid extra for your time going to door to door?
The employees that will be working door to door will not be doing that during the regular business hours.
So how will they be getting paid their extra money?
Well, they have to be paid according to what the labor laws say.
So they're going to get overtime?
That's right.
Oh, how nice.
If exceed forty hours.
And what rate of pay are the contracted workers?
Ten dollars an hour.
And is there, is there the idea of how much work they will be doing?
We've talked about that, we really don't know. We've said maybe, they may be twenty days or maybe more than that, but that's what we told them, trying to make them ID cards, and I think we said, well, let's expire those at the end of December. We started out with the idea that everybody can pay ten dollars an hour, but a couple of calls, the Labor Board informed us that, well, if you're going to use employees, you gotta pay them percent rate for, and that differs according to seniority and all that, so.
So anybody in the courthouse can go out and do this if it's okay with you, Mr. Pan?
If Mr. Whitten, it's not me, it's Mr. Whitten.
Well, and she just said you, so that's why.
Well, he's my boss.
So.
That's all.
So any employee in the courthouse.
It's still Mr. Whitten's call.
Can go out and do this door to door, voter's registration, if approved by Mr. Whitten, and it would cost the taxpayers overtime, correct?
Yes.
Okay. In economic times like we have now.
And even if they're Republican or Democrat, that's.
It wouldn't matter. It's just, I know there's people out there that don't have a job. How would these employees choose?
Just volunteer, I think.
Is it just random?
Whoever wanted to work, anybody wanted to do that.
We called several people that didn't want to work. We've had a time getting lots, several people to go out.
And I had to believe that those people who work here needed to have an opportunity because they have a better understanding of all this process and things, and I have no problems with that.
Are these mostly election workers from the past, or?
The ones working there.
These sixteen or seventeen, no?
Some of them, yes.
Okay. And are some of them high school students?
Yes.
Okay.
They've been already working a couple.
Yes, and not all the high school students, most of the high school students will not be going door to door.
About percentage of the people working and the voter will be back working, a third or half or?
You mean, like in the next May election? It's really hard to determine at this juncture, but there definitely will be less people working because of combining the precincts, but I don't think that, at least I have heard anybody discuss yet, asked what the game plan will be, but I know that there has, you know, we've talked before, there's going to be less people needed. And, but I really don't have a, what's to tell on that, but I think there will probably be a third less maybe, but that'd just be a guess right now, because I really hadn't sat down and done that. But it'll depend on the, how many people's in that precinct, once they combine them, and the active voter participation and things like that will determine what do we need in the way of workers. So I had one lady come up to me already, when you combine the precincts out of Ranger, they may not even let me work. And I said, well, surely let you work, you've always worked, and she has. And she said, yeah, but I might not be up on the toad hole like some of them. I said, what do you mean? She said, well, you know, if the committee people want to select them, they might not put her name on that list. And I said, yeah, you're right, they might not. I said, but I think they would. But that's the kind of thing that's already starting to talk, they'd seen the paper where you combine some of, these out in Rangers, what.
I guess we will, I'll be notified about the precincts and who's got changed to what and all that, so I can be planning for next year.
We can get a letter tomorrow.
So.
But she talked on the committee.
I'm talking about regarding the committee, not just my normal election.
Um, what is that, ninety days before the election?
Yeah, the calendar will get here soon.
We notify the chairman of the Republican Democrat Party, the county commission does, we send you a letter every time, I think it's ninety days before election.
Well, you sent me that packet with.
That's what I would send.
But I'm, at the last meeting, I asked Mr. Whitten, with the new redistricting process, and since you're already jumping on the ball about going door to door and doing above and beyond what the Secretary of State requires with his mailings, I asked to be informed of when you all work that process out to let me know about what the number of the precincts are, because, you know, I get phone calls, we get questions, and people are wanting to know too. So that's, that's what I'm asking.
Really, the ad in the paper this week, basically says the old what's new is what it is, it doesn't give you the number or anything, but I thought you was talking about how many workers would be.
Well, that, I need that information also, yeah.
When you get your package to pick houses, then that'll be determined at that time. We haven't raised, I haven't any talking about it anyway.
It's my understanding from Jo Von that the Secretary of State's office does require not only a letter, but those areas that have been impacted by magisterial changes within that precinct, that they have to be notified door to door. So it's not above and beyond, we're going based on what is in the law, which is, we have to notify them directly. Now, above and beyond would be that we could hire five people for the county, but we want to make sure that we get this done as quickly as possible so that there's no confusion when we approach the next election.
Well, when I talked to the Secretary of State's office, they said that all that's required by the Secretary of State's office is a direct mailing, and that anything that is above the direct mailing is above and beyond. So.
And that may be true, I mean, I don't know for sure.
Lisa, when you were talking about that, did you ask the clerk to notify you of the precinct numbers and the changes?
Yes, how the, you know how we have the precinct numbers now, one through thirty-seven, and they're going to be, some of them are going to be changing, some are going to be staying the same.
In the letter that you receive tomorrow, as well as all the other registered voters, there is a listing such as what was in the paper this week states if thirty, like thirty and thirty-one combined to make precinct one. Thirty-two and thirty-three combined, I think that was precinct three. Eight is number two. And it tells you exactly what's combined and what's making up.
Right, always before to the county clerk's office, we had a list saying Sheridan District Precinct, ding 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 ding, you know.
And that's what, and that's what this is. You see, it's got District one, what makes up District one, District two, what makes up District two, and that's in the letter that you will receive.
And where they'll vote.
Yes, and what location.
That's what I need to know.
That's in that letter.
We're going to keep the communication open up until we start a new year, I'm sure, because we want to make sure everybody understands this, the whys and the hows.
And I'll be going door to door in Bear Creek, if sure, or somebody wants to come and go with me. I'm not saying who's going to get paid, but if he wants to come and go with me and see how everything is moving.
Give me half the day. Hey, maybe you should have half the day.
Is the aim to wrap this up before filing date in January? So it'll all be done by the time candidates file?
Yeah, yeah, that's been, that's been our plan all along. Mine is by Christmas, have it over with.
Are all of them going to be in schools, all the precincts?
Not sure about a couple of them yet.
My river will be, my river home, Woodville will be at Woodville.
And you've got a couple communities in, Big Ugly and McHorkel.
And that, that's what I'm talking about. There used to be a list from the county clerk's office that said, like, this precinct, Red River, this one.
Well, that'll happen yet, that'll be there.
It's in that letter, did you not see that letter?
No, you, port's over, you'll get it. Be tired of it, probably.
I do have to say that the reason January filing date is the goal, when people get ready to file for the next election, they need to know what precinct or magisterial they're in. But that just makes sense, so.
But it will, you'll tell them where they're at and everything.
Okay, anything else before the body? If not, lotion to the janitor. Seven-thirty. Four people.